Okay, I called to order this regular scheduled meeting of the 34th City Council for August 22, 2023, scheduled for 7:00 PM. Everyone in the audience, if you please silence your phones as to not disturb the meeting. Mr. Clerk, can we please have the roll call vote?
Councilmember Inos.
Here.
Councilmember Hamud.
Here.
Councilmember Abraham.
Here.
Councilmember Paris.
Here.
Councilmember Al Sawafi. Councilmember Herrick.
Here.
Council President Sarini.
Here.
We have a quorum. Okay, at this time, I would like to introduce Father Ken Chase from Sacred Heart Catholic Church. All those that can stand, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's take a moment to settle our minds and hearts. God of justice and mercy, in these days, we recognize once more our dependence on you as the beginning and the end of all goodness, the source of power and might, the measure of wisdom and justice. Tonight, we ask you, assist the leaders of our community gathered here to act with character, compassion, and conviction that they may discern wisely the best course for our community. Help all who speak with charity, help all to speak with charity and restraint, help all to listen with understanding and goodwill. Give our leaders and all the members of the community a spirit of service and remind us that we are but temporary stewards of your authority. Help us always to see the humanity and the inherent dignity of each person and to treat them with reverence and respect your creation deserves. Help us ensure that justice and fairness prevail in our community, that the rights of each person without exception be protected and safeguarded, so that all who live or visit here will find a safe and secure, peaceful and just community. We pray as well for all whose lives are affected by the deliberations and decisions of this council, for you've called us to work together for the peace and justice you offer to each person. We entrust to your mercy all the citizens and residents of our community. May God grant us health and peace, justice and security and abundance, and we pray to you, who are Lord and God, forever and ever. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Father. Okay, at this time, I will entertain a motion to specifically suspend our council rules to move forward our item number five and six before the public comment portion. Do I have an offer?
Motion.
A motion by Councilman Hamud, supported by Councilwoman Herrick. Do we have any objection to unanimous roll? Hearing non-unanimous roll will be attached. Mr. Clerk, we will move forward to item five, correct?
Yes, item five, resolution by Council President Sarini, supported unanimously acknowledging the following Dearborn firefighters for their heroic acts on August 5, 2023. Captain Ken Abraham, Lieutenant Adam Farrell, firefighter Steve Timmons, and firefighter Terry Garston, with a citation and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. So at this time, we would like to take a moment, of course, to recognize these firefighters who on August 5 took immediate action at a house fire on Wall Street in the city of Melvindale, where there was a trapped homeowner of the home inside. When the Melvindale police arrived, they could hear somebody yelling for help, but it suddenly stopped and they knew that entering the fire was not under their capacity. They were there to help and assist our firefighters to let them know exactly the location of this gentleman. The flames were coming out of the front door and there was zero visibility in the house. However, they did not stop them from entering the fire. In the process of containing the fire, Captain Abraham, along with Lieutenant Farrell, firefighter Stephen Timmons, and firefighter Kerry Katson rapidly removed the unconscious man from the burning home to be transported to the hospital. Due to their quick thinking and heroickness of these firefighters, the man is still alive and recovering today. From the 34th City Council, our Mayor Abdullah Hamud and his administration would like to thank you for your dedication and your bravery and your ability to put your lives on the line and sacrifice for others. So I would like to give them a round of applause. I know that Lieutenant, what we're going to do, we have another commendation very similar that I'm going to read, and then the council will come down along with the mayor and Mr. Clerk, Derain, if you join us for a photo and the presentation of these citations. But I know Lieutenant Farrell, you had some words you'd like to share. We'd love to hear him if you'd like to come up regarding this incident.
And before he speaks, is it possible to?
Yeah, absolutely. Mayor?
You can come forward.
Of course, yeah, absolutely. Just let the mayor go ahead.
I was at the homecoming festival, hanging out with the firefighters, when I heard about the story that unfolded in Melvindale. And I think it's important to note that heroic acts are happening on a daily basis, more likely an hourly basis, by many of our first responders, and it often goes unnoticed. And none of you are in this work because you try to go unnoticed, you're in this work because your heart is in it, and you care for the residents, and you want to do what you can in the moment that you have. And in this particular day, it was saving a life. I think what was more eye-opening for me, and you know, I wish Ken was here, I got to watch the body cam footage of the Melvindale police officer that was present after you firefighters had come out of the house and saved the individual. And what you didn't see was gloating happening or high-fiving one another. You actually saw Ken walk up to the police officer and thank them for showing up and doing what they did. And it really, you know, it hit at home that this is a team effort. Everybody has a role to play. And in that moment in time, whether you were in the house, whether you were outside coordinating, whether you were dispatching out to that house, it really took a whole collective of people that executed, executed to the best of their abilities, that ended up with the result that we had. And just want to take a moment to thank you for that. And I thought it was absolutely necessary to share that story because we don't share them enough. If there's anything that we could do, I wish we could share every single story that comes out, and I'd be posting nonstop if that was the case. But thank you sincerely from the bottom of my heart for what you do each and every single day, most of the time without notice or commendation.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Lieutenant Farrell, if you'd like to address the council, you had some things you'd like to say.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I really appreciate it. First and foremost, I wanted to start by thanking you for recognizing this. My words are kind of similar to what you had to say yourself, Mayor, is that though we may be the ones today getting recognized for the actual pulling this gentleman out of the fire, it took everybody that was on that scene to make this able to be something that we could do. There's a couple other guys in the room tonight, if you don't mind if I recognize them as well.
Of course, absolutely.
I have Devin McCully right here. Devin was on the ambulance that transported him to the hospital as well. And then behind him is my brother, which recently, they allowed us to work together the same shift. So the first 12 years, we couldn't work the same days, and then the first fire we go to together, this is what happens. And when we pulled up, he was on the ambulance crew. Can you stand up, Matt? He was actually doing a really important role. He was on the first arriving ambulance crew, and they ventilated the windows, which allowed the hot air to get out of there, so gave this gentleman a chance to survive because, as we know, the hot air and smoke and stuff, and it was harmful. So just want to thank you guys, the residents of Dearborn, Chief. You guys worked really hard to get us great resources, you get us good manpower, and it gives us the opportunity to do these things. We had crews from four different stations that showed up to this fire. So without your support, without the support of the residents, without your support, Chief, this doesn't happen. So thank you.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, a unanimous roll will be attached. Can we have the next item?
Item six, resolution by Council President Sarini, supported unanimously acknowledging Officer Mohammed Hashem for performing lifesaving measures during a critical accident with a council with citation and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Melvindale Officer Mohammed Hashem, who's also a Dearborn resident, was listening off-duty to his radio about to take a nap when he heard a bunch of screaming on his street in Kendall in Dearborn, and then heard the radio saying that there was a three-year-old unresponsive. Mohammed Hashem immediately ran out of his house and down the street to find an unresponsive three-year-old child. He sprung into action with his training and turned the child over and began giving him the necessary treatment to unlog his airways and was able to get him to regain his airways and be able to begin regaining his consciousness just in time for our fire department to be able to be on the scene and with the ambulance to transport him. We are grateful for the incredible bravery and swift action of this police officer and Dearborn resident that led to the lifesaving rescue. Your selflessness and dedication in the face of danger exemplifies the true essence of heroism, and thank you for making our community a safer place. Mr. Hashem? Thank you. Yes, Councilman Paris, I know that there is, we're going to have everybody come up, but I just wanted another note I have here, just to recognize too that it is your birthday. May I ask how old you are, or that's not allowed?
Twenty-six.
All right, 26. He said it.
That's what I was going to say.
All right.
That needs to be recognized.
Yeah, 26 years old. Folks, I mean, you know, when someone's in the right place at the right time, as Lieutenant Farrell's indicated, you know, we can sit up here and use our residents' tax dollars to provide the best equipment, the best training, but we can't be the person to act. That right there is the difference. So acting and actually going in with four men and pulling out a gentleman, or off-duty running upstairs down your block to turn over a three-year-old child and make sure that he gets his airways open at a critical time. As everybody knows, you stop breathing, you lose a lot, a lot of things can happen in your brain and your area. So again, I can't thank you enough as a Dearborn resident, and I do appreciate the Melvindale Police Department and them being there as well for the fire as well, as these are two separate incidents.
Council President?
Yes.
I just want to speak to this one as well.
Absolutely.
You know, I think it's, if you live in Dearborn, you know the Hashem brothers, and you know that when they're not at work, they're on the radio, and they're on the radio 24 hours a day. And I don't know if it's because they love the sound of their brother's voice, maybe dispatching, who was also a dispatcher for us.
Yes.
But I think it speaks volumes that you have an off-duty officer who's at home listening to dispatch in the city of Dearborn, and I'm assuming you probably have one for Melvindale if I was a betting man. There we go. Correct, because of consolidated dispatch. And for you to run out the way that you did in the camera footage that was there, you know, it's not an act that the Hashems have not done before. I was with your brother when a firework exploded in a person's backyard, caught on fire with the carpet during the flooding events that happened in '21, and he actually busted through a fence and turned on the hose like he was a professional firefighter to put out the carpet fire. And so it's something that we know that the Hashems do repeatedly, and so just want to thank you for, honestly, for your citizenship in this city and beyond, and it's what makes Dearborn such a special place. So thank you.
Absolutely. And, Mr. Clerk, we shall have a unanimous roll attached. At this time, what I'm going to do is I'm going to have the council come down along with the mayor and our city clerk. I would like our firefighters to come up first, we'll get a photo with them and present them with their citations, and then after, Mr. Hashem, I believe your mother is here as well, we'd like to have her up with us. Let me give you guys this. Let's get you guys up. You guys pull them off. Kerry? We're going to have you guys come a little closer. We'll have five, ten up here. Then, Councilmember, what do you, maybe Sam, because there's so much. Let's get you guys up here. Chief, let's get you up here. Thank you guys very much. Chief, thanks for picking the good guys.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you, Colonel. Mr. Hashem. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, the families for the firefighters. All right. Thank you guys very much. We'll give a pause for a couple minutes to allow the people that are exiting the meeting. Appreciate that. Mr. Clerk, can you give us the next item?
Yes, next item will be public comments.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. So at this time, the council allows for up to 30 minutes of public comment, and this is before our agenda items, as well as there's an unlimited public comment at the end. I ask everybody to please fill out comment cards. If they do not have one, they're on the side, and this way we can go in order. If you do not fill out a comment card, it's not a problem, just come on step up after. I will bring you up to speak. Remember, please keep your comments to city business. There's a three-minute limitation in which the clerk will keep track and give you a 30-second warning just in between. So we do have some comment cards here. First one is Mr. Hague.
President Sarini, just a general comment, you may want to caution the council with regards to making any comments or questions, because this one is currently under litigation as a courtesy to you, sir.
Yeah, I do appreciate it, because I do have a difference in opinion of the city council, the corporation council. I do not believe that this is the form or the order, it's proper for you to make comments on ongoing litigation, and I want to remind my council members here that any information or anything that you say can and will be used as a city official statement that can be used in litigation against the city. So, Mr. Hague, against my better judgment, I will allow you to proceed.
Thank you, sir. Gavin Hague, 22301 Cherry Hill in Dearborn. I'm the designated representative for the Riverbend Neighborhood Association. The city approved a six-inch pipe connection to our existing 12-inch storm sewer located under Cherry Hill Street. It comes from the new house at 22274 Cherry Hill that is being built on the flagship lot on the property of Christ Church, has sold. There is an added drainage system on the plot drawing that has nine catch basins, 24 inches in diameter, that lead to our 12-inch undersized storm sewer. The Dearborn 2007 stormwater policy is allowing 24,500 gallons per hour to be put into that undersized storm sewer. Note, a 21-foot round pool with a depth of about 52 inches holds 14,500 gallons. The policy as written in 2007 is obsolete. As a comparison, Ann Arbor Stormwater Policy is one-fifth of that in comparison to Dearborn. Homes along Cherry Hill Storm Sewer Drain Piping System, Military to Brainerd, based on a professional engineering analysis, residential homes connected to the Cherry Hill 12-inch storm sewer via their floor drains will experience more flooding events. In addition, the volume of storm water, as calculated in these simulations, will fill basements along Cherry Hill Military to Brainerd with deeper depth for each event. The flooding will be caused by increased volume of storm water being injected to the undersized 12-inch Cherry Hill Storm Sewer. The residents' basements will be utilized as a temporary holding reservoir for stormwater management. The piping connection within this massive stormwater load already on the undersized storm sewer is imminent. They are going to be digging within the next few weeks. It's already been approved by Dearborn Engineering. Riverbend Neighborhood Association requests stop this connection. There is an alternate solution. Connect to the Military 21-inch Storm Sewer.
You have 30 seconds.
You are going to destroy our basements and our home values by taking this action. Please, save our basements from thousands of gallons of storm water. We do not oppose the home being built.
Thank you. So Gavin, thank you very much. Just for correction from legal counsel and for the record, the city of Dearborn has been dismissed from that lawsuit and has been, from what we understand, reserved the right to countersue for the cost of that litigation, which the city has not done. So I just want to make sure that's said, the city of Dearborn is not party to this lawsuit. It was dismissed by the court, so I just want to make that a record. All right, next we have Andrea Unger.
Hello. Name and address?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay. Andrea Unger, 6401 Ruder. I want to thank the mayor and the council for allowing me to speak on Thursday night to express my concern about the noise ordinance. It gave me a good indication of your feelings on the noise ordinance and the call to prayer that's now being broadcast on loudspeakers on Shafer and on Chase in East Dearborn. This call is for a specific reason only, and the words can be heard a quarter mile away outside the mosques at 1:30 and 9:00 PM daily. Jesus said, "All who believe and are baptized will be saved," but the churches would not play the Lord's Prayer or the Apostles' Creed on loudspeakers outside their churches to compel others to listen to their message. For 40 years, the south end of Dearborn has been playing the call to prayer, but with the surrounding cemetery, railroad tracks, and industry, there must have been no complaints or action taken. Is the call to prayer being broadcast in neighborhoods in West Dearborn also? Bells have served many purposes in rural and urban areas, warnings, weddings, funerals, celebrations, the hour of the day, as well as the beginning of church services. They do not express words and are not amplified on loudspeakers. By allowing this to continue, the government of Dearborn, through the council, the mayor, and the police, are endorsing this religious message with no other purpose than to call a specific group of residents to prayer. Up until April of this year, the mosques have been using their indoor space or their app, which I've downloaded, to call their followers to prayer. Why isn't this possible again to address this issue? Or if bells are comparable to the call, why don't they send out a specific message? Why couldn't we use bells as a plausible alternative? The council indicated last week that no change was made to the ordinance, no vote was taken, and complaints for the unreasonably loud religious message have been made to the police, the council, and the mayor's office. I appreciate the council and the services and the police department attempting to contact the Islamic Institute on Shafer to request limiting the intrusion on our neighborhood. The volume has now been turned down for the last few days, but can still be heard a quarter mile away. Has a decision been made to allow this, and if so, by whom? Has there been a vote? And for transparency, where is the documentation and the notification to the residents in the city? Is the plan to allow this call to prayer all over the city of Dearborn? If the churches and mosques have been using phone apps and their interior prayers up until April...
You have 30 seconds.
...I respectfully request the council recommends the churches and mosques return to that format. If the bells appear to have the same message, why not offer that option? While the call to prayer is required for this religion, having loudspeakers amplified in the neighborhood is not. Thank you for giving me the time to speak to you tonight.
Okay, Ms. Unger, thank you so much. I just, I know that you had came Thursday, so I just want to make a few comments to make sure we're on the same page. So I do thank you for coming, and I know that you had came Thursday, but I wanted to make sure that's clear so that, because you had made some statements that this is an endorsement of the government. The government does not endorse any religion.
But you're allowing it.
Ma'am, what's legal, it's allowed for people to drink. Does that mean that we're endorsing? There, it's allowed for them to gamble. Does that mean we're endorsing the gambling and drinking? You cannot mix that. I made it clear to you on Thursday, when you gave an example of a school, which is a state institution and a government function. The city council government has not endorsed, does not endorse religious activities. Each religion has its own. You also are indicating that why don't they try a different method, like a bell or something? That's not up to the government. The city of Dearborn cannot tell a religious place to change their religious beliefs to make it something else, to use something else to make it your liking. I did call the mosques to make sure, because we have laws with ordinances, and they are within the law, and I asked them to make sure that they could not hover on it, but be below it, so that it would be not as intrusive as that you may have taken it. And if they're within the law and their decimal readers reading, there's nothing that we can do. This is allowed to happen. But I don't appreciate you saying that it's a city endorsement. It's not a city endorsement, and nor miss, and I don't want to mislead the public, we are not the school system, which is a government function, so we do not endorse it, because on Thursday, you read about the government and the Supreme Court rulings on schooling. That's not what's happening here. So I just want to make sure that that's clear. Did you have anything you wanted to respond to?
I understand what you're saying, but it is also a verbal message that's being sent out. It is a religious message that's being sent out into the neighborhood.
It's the message, whatever it's done and however they do it, whether it's a megaphone, horns, bells, whatever method they use, whatever religion uses any method, that is not under the control of the council, as long as it's under the decimal readings, which I verified myself that it is. So I'm sorry that you feel that way, but we can... So I'm sorry that you feel that way, but we cannot get involved in that.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate your follow-up.
I did, absolutely. I told you I would.
Thank you.
I mean, I told you I would because as the mayor indicated, they were hovering at the limit or slightly over, and that shouldn't happen. It should be under the limit, so we made sure that it was. So I do appreciate you bringing it to our attention, but I just want to make it clear for the residents, the government is not in the business of regulating religion.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Hassan Om.
Good afternoon, my name is Hassan Om. Just hearing the lady talking about religion, you know, when the bells go off, nobody says nothing. And now they're going to sit there and silence us. For years, we've been silenced, and nobody has said nothing. All of a sudden, they put our ordinance together, it passes, and now we can't even sit there and do our holy thing. How does that make any sense to anybody? This is ridiculous. The American flag, the city flags here, we sit there and represent all these flags over here. Why are we going to sit here and just indicate, oh, we want only bells? Well, in my religion, when the prayer comes, they sit there and start speaking, and it's in Arabic. You don't -- some people don't understand Arabic. I understand Arabic. So that's how we do it, and it's not going to change. We're not going to put bells. We're not going to put this. This is what we have. It's freedom of religion. Anybody can sit there and express their religion. It's freedom of speech, too. It's freedom of religion. I'm not understanding why do people come here and just tell us what we can do and what we can't do? This shouldn't have ever been even on this, what's it called, the public comment? You want to sit there and talk? I could talk, too. It's freedom of speech. But what I'm trying to say is, for years, we have been attacked, and nobody has said nothing. I am with American people, with Jewish people, with any kind of race, but I don't tolerate somebody coming here and disrespecting my religion. And I'm asking anybody, if you want to speak, don't sit there and come to this podium over here disrespecting Muslims, or Americans, or Jewish people, or any people at all. Whoever wants to put a microphone and say whatever they want in their neighborhood and whatever religion it is, they can do whatever they want. This is America. That's all I have to say for today.
Thank you, Mr. Om. All right, next we have Mr. John Benzick, active president of the Grinley Civic Association.
I'm John Benzick with the Grinley Civic Association, and I'm the acting president. And, boy, my wife is mad that I'm down here tonight, but anyway, I've got a few phone calls.
We haven't seen you in a while, Mr. Benzick, so I'm glad that you're okay.
Well, I'm busy.
Glad to see you here.
I'm busy. I have a farm out in south of Ann Arbor, and I want, first of all, before I get started, I want to thank the fire department and the police department. Anytime anything has gone on in our civic association, up to murders and fires and all that, they've always been Johnny on the spot. I mean, absolutely, we've had some horrific. I'm here tonight to spell out our position as a civic association, and there's been some rumors and calls that come to my house related to a business or some businesses. Over the years, we've been in operation since 1941. We're in the Hubbard administration and been active in some major cases, incidents in zoning activities over the years with the city of Dearborn. Basically, we have a walls stretching all the way from Dartman Avenue all the way up on the east side of Telegraph Road, covering areas of Leland and Lloyd Court area, West Point Avenue, Cornell Avenue, Harvard Avenue, and Oxford Avenue. And we are a civic association that represents homeowners and residents. That has been our policy over the years and all of the years to keep our nose out of businesses and business activity anywhere that's operating on the east side of Telegraph Road and where the walls are constructed. A couple rumors have come around to me that somebody wants to do something of this nature and come down to the city council meeting to express their opinion tonight. I did not see it on the agenda. They told, they informed me the meeting starts at 8:00. I knew it was starting at 7:00, so I came down here to take a position with our Grinley Civic Association that we honor all the agreements over the years, that residential activity that was established and the walls have been built. We have neighbors we have to protect as residential one, and nothing has changed. And anybody that comes down here otherwise has to go through the proper channels, if they have to go through the planning commission or the zoning commission or the zoning board appeal commission or wherever it is. We follow a diplomatic civic organization as far as any issues related to our civic association. I do have some new people.
You have 30 seconds.
I have some new people who are taking over the Grinley Civic Association. I'm working with them. I'm training them. And if there's any future business, they're going to come down here in a professional manner to handle anything that has to do with the city of Dearborn. I thank you very much.
Appreciate that, Mr. Benzick. Thank you.
And I want to represent the civic association and the Hubbard administration and all the council members that I have to work with over the years. And to be honest with you, I'm about the only one of the old administration who's alive and has worked with all the former members of the city of Dearborn over the years. I historically have been all the way involved in issues, even all the way to the Supreme Court with the city of Dearborn, believe it or not. And we've won everything. We've been highly professional, and I hope the new people that come before the city of Dearborn hold the high standards that I've held over the years. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Benzick. We do appreciate you. Thank you for coming in. All right, at this time, I have no other cards. If anyone else in the audience would like to address the council regarding city business, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Hearing none, seeing none, at this time, Mr. Perk, we move to item seven, correct?
Yes, item seven, resolution in need of offer and support approving all the items on the consent agenda and requesting immediate effect.
All right, offer and support. Okay, before we do that, just quickly, we have, I want to make sure I get this in the record, that before we move forward on the consent agenda, are there any items that any member would like to remove from the consent agenda and discuss individually? All right, hearing none, we had an offer by Councilman Abraham, supported by Councilwoman Herrick. Mr. Clerk, can you please call a roll call vote on this?
Yes. Councilmember Enos?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamud?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Elswafi?
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick?
Yes.
Council President Serini?
Yes.
Six yeas, the motion passes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Can we have the next item?
We'll move to item number 34, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Hamud approving the minutes of the previous regular meeting of July 18, 2023.
Okay, are there any additions, deletions, or modifications to these minutes? Okay, hearing and seeing none, unanimous roll be attached. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Item 35, resolution by councilmembers Enos and Herrick approving the minutes of the previous special closed meeting of August 2, 2023.
Are there any additions, deletions, or modifications to these minutes? Okay, hearing and seeing no objection, unanimous roll be attached. Next item, please.
Item 36, ordinance number 23-1795, an ordinance to amend the animals chapter, chapter four of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Article 2, Section 4-23, entitled License Required, resolution by councilmembers Hamud and Enos to take from the table for its final reading.
Okay, unanimous roll be attached, take from the table for its final reading. The city's existing dog animal ordinance currently has no limit on the number of dogs a resident may possess in their own home. The proposed revisions amend the dog licensing ordinance to limit the number of dogs a person may allow to own, possess, shelter, keep, harbor, or maintain to no more than three that are six months of age or older. The limit would apply at any or within any one residence dwelling or legal property boundary. There is an exception, of course, which will be allowed for short-term, excuse me, dog fostering sponsored by the Friends of Animals of Metro Detroit only, no more than two dogs for no more than three months period of time. Short-term fostering or inherited dogs shall be also excluded and must be registered with the Friends of Animals of Metro Detroit or FFAMD. The ordinance does not apply, of course, to duly licensed shops, pet shops, kennels, veterinarians, veteran hospitals, doggy daycares, as well as boarding facilities. A violation would remain as a civil infraction with this increase of fines for repeat offenders until the third offense, which will become a 90-day misdemeanor under our ordinance, section 4-6. This ordinance will take effect as of April 1, 2024. This will allow for more time for education, marketing, promoting, licensing, and registration. This is the second and final reading of this ordinance. Before we open it up, some questions. I know that we did ask our clerk, and I did receive, Mr. Clerk, some information from your office regarding ordinances. Currently, right now, we have a one-year license for a dog license. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we are looking at having that go to two and three years as an option to make it have a little bit longer effect. A year goes by pretty quick. And I know that we do have some people from the animal shelter. I'm not sure if you'd like to speak on this.
I have an email, but it didn't get to you.
Are you okay with it? Okay. Anyone else from the audience that would like to speak on this item?
The clerk.
Councilman Hamud from the council. I apologize. Council first, yeah?
I guess I just want to clarify, when you were reading the description, my understanding is we're not going to be grandfathering in dogs, especially if they're not licensed. So that was a discussion we had at the council. So I don't know why that was in your description because that's not...
You want me to go, council president? Sorry to interrupt you.
Yeah, one second.
There was an updated ordinance with revisions that was sent. It was emailed to all of council, but it's not in your agenda before you.
Yeah.
I'm not sure why it's not...
No, no, I understand. And just for the record, the ordinance is the one that I sign after comes from the clerk, which we review under corporation counsel. I did, Councilman Hamud, I did not say anything was grandfathered in.
Oh, okay, I thought I heard.
I just want to make that abundantly clear.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, because I agree with you. I mean, you know, you need to get the dog license. We're allowing to the 24th, to April, for the animal shelter to go ahead, as well as us and our communications from the city, to let people know to register dogs. We want to encourage compliance. We're not here to be penal and penalize people. We want to encourage. So we believe because of the holidays coming up and then the springtime, that it's a great opportunity for us to educate, put out in our website, as well as our new council connection? Is that the name? Council connection newsletter will be coming to your door soon to remind you about registering your pet and give you an option to register for two and three years as well as one. And that time enforcement will start on the 1st of April, and hopefully, the more people will go ahead and then register. But that is not a grandfathering in. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Councilman Abraham?
Yeah. I think there are one highlight that's important. We are obviously creating this ordinance, and it's more restrictive than the current ordinance. And I just want everybody to know that there is a carve-out for an appeal process. We know there are unique situations. We don't pretend to legislate to the, you know, the most unique of circumstances. So if anybody feels that they will not be able to comply with this ordinance because of their situation, it does, the ordinance does offer an opportunity for residents to come to city council for a waiver.
Hey, Councilman Abraham, I do appreciate that. Yes, absolutely. Your council is the body that will be looking at these case by cases if there is appeal. I appreciate that. Any other questions or comments for my colleagues? Okay, any objection? No, this one, actually, we need...
Yes.
Yes, so, Mr. Perk, can we have, this is a final reading, a roll call vote?
This is the final reading of ordinance number 23-1795, an ordinance to amend the animals chapter, chapter four of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Article 2, Section 4-23, entitled License Required.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Hamud?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick?
Yes.
Council President Serini?
Yes.
Councilmember Enos?
Yes.
Six yeas, the ordinance passes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Can I have the next item?
Item 37, ordinance number 23-1796, introduced by councilmember Herrick, synopsis and ordinance to amend the water and sewers chapter, chapter 19 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Article 1, Section 19-14, entitled Water and Sewers.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Let's get to this page. Okay, this item is being brought forward as an ordinance to take from the table, again, due to its failure to be published in the newspaper regarding, in our last cycle, which is required by our ordinances. This will also include in this ordinance that residents shall, I'm sorry, shall maintain, no, this is wrong, hang on a second, I apologize. This is a redo ordinance, and what it says is that if we do come out to the resident's home for a sewer break, is that correct, Mr. Clerk? Is that what you have?
Yes.
Yes, okay. If we do come out for a sewer break, that the cost to repair in our ordinance will not be charging the resident to regrade and cede the area after, by the city in the area that they do disturb. So this is the change that the council made, and it's coming back before us because it was not published properly. So we have to read it again for two readings. Any questions or comments on this item for my members? Okay, Mr. Clerk, can we have, you had the first reading, right?
This is the first reading.
Okay.
This is the first reading of ordinance number 23-1796, entitled An Ordinance to Amend the Water and Sewers Chapter, Chapter 19 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Article 1, Section 19-14, entitled Water and Sewers, resolution by councilmembers Perez and Abraham to table the ordinance.
Okay, and this is a request to rezone 15500 Lundey Parkway. The proposed rezoning is consistent with the city's master plan, which designates this area now as known as Technology, the Employment, Research, and Development, which is called TR, Technology and Research, to BC, General Business. The Planning Commission recommended approval on May 8, 2023, and this is the first of two readings. Any questions or comments for my colleagues on this item? Okay, Mr. Clerk, can we have the first reading?
This is the first reading of ordinance number 23-1797, entitled An Ordinance to Amend Section 9.02 of Ordinance Number 06-1111 of the City of Dearborn by rezoning the property located at 15500 Lundey Parkway from a TR, which is a Technology and Research District, to a BC, which is a General Business District. Resolution by councilmembers Abraham and Enos to table the ordinance.
Okay, any objection to unanimous roll? Hearing and seeing none, unanimous roll should be attached. Next item.
Item 39, ordinance number 23-1799, introduced by councilmember Perez, synopsis and ordinance to amend the police and fire revised retirement system chapter, chapter 23, by adding Section 240.18, entitled Deferred Retirement Option Program, otherwise known as DROP.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Chapter 23 is the city of Dearborn's Police and Fire Revised Retirement System. It is the defined benefit system that was established in 1956. Currently, the system is closed, and no new members can join. The city is proposing a Deferred Retirement Option Program, or DROP, D-R-O-P, for members of Chapter 23 who are department heads, appointees, at-will employees, appointed by the mayor pursuant to the city charter and serve at the discretion of the mayor. Any member of the DROP eligibility, any member who has DROP eligibility is granted, granted may elect to participate in this program at any time after having obtained voluntary retirement age as defined in Section 235.01 of Chapter 23. The DROP offers eligibility of members, an incentive to continue serving the city after becoming eligible for their retirement. The benefit of the DROP is that the participant receives a retirement allowance to their DROP account in the amount of their regular monthly retirement benefit to which the, I'm sorry, benefit to which the participant would have been entitled even if they were retired, and it will be held in abeyance until they actually do retire paid at full. This is the first of two readings. Any questions or comments on this for my colleagues? Councilman Perez?
Thank you, council president. If I could, I just have one question that I did not think about asking during the mayor's briefing or the committee, the whole, just a potential scenario at any time. Should a, this is dealing with the fire chief and the fire, and the police chief, should any time in the future, if they enter into a drop plan, if this is approved, what would happen if the mayor removed them from office? I didn't see any language that would particularly cover a situation because we all know that there are changes in department heads, you know, over a period of time for whatever reason, or asking for somebody's resignation. Is there any specific language within this that actually covers that should somebody be removed from office for whatever reason?
Yes, Mr. Mendelson?
So I'll try to speak to this from my understanding.
Mayor, okay.
But if you terminate an at-will employee, they lose their salary, but they retain their retirement benefit. And so you retain the retirement benefit, so the person is able to collect their pension as is, but you just don't have a salary, and you're not employed.
Because I just wondered if that's something, you know, you're making it sound like it's really obvious, but legalese, you know, I'm not an attorney. Should that be something that should be within the paperwork if, of the ordinance, should this go forward? this go forward?
Yeah, I'm, Mr. Mandelson, if you'd like to answer, I can answer from the council on my point. For me, it's not that it's very obvious, but they're eligible for their retirement. Their retirement is for years termed. They are always an at-will employee that serves at the pleasure of the mayor. So, whether they are terminated, or if they themselves cease to, or ask for their resignation, they resign themselves, or they actually then retire again, retire and finally leave, to me, it's all the same. They will be, they're eligible for their payment. Mr. Mandelson?
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, that would be my understanding as well, because the whole purpose of the DROP would be to continue employment while still, when you're retirement-eligible, once that employment is terminated, then it would act, it would act like any other normal retirement at that point. You'd collect their retirement, and obviously, you could seek employment elsewhere, so the DROP wouldn't be applicable to that individual anymore.
Did you see what it stands for?
Yes, I did.
Oh, I thought you did.
Yeah, I did. And just for the members of the public in the audience, so when a person reaches their age of retirement, the IRS has a ruling that says they have to have a bona fide separation unless you use this program, which has been around since 1980, and many, many cities use it. What it does is allow someone who wants to stay on to retire, take his retirement benefits and put it in a, in a, in a separate account that they cannot access, and then still keep their regular wage and work, which is they were entitled. For the taxpayers and for the residents, there's no additional cost. You have to pay this regardless. But instead of the person leaving and working for another city or another government after we spent all the time training them, and they're doing a great job, we ask them to say, this is something that I asked back in 2016, and was told that it had to be a bona fide separation under IRS rules, which is true. But again, if you don't ask the whole question, there's another portion since 1980 that is called this program drop, where you can suspend their pay so they're not receiving that benefit, and it's held in abeyance. And I am glad that the administration found this, this out, and they're using it, and many other cities, as we had a briefing on, do this as well. Councilman Herrick, do you have something you want to add?
Yeah. Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to, again, for the benefit of the public, as well as for city employees who may have heard about this, a lot of the employees have heard about this at this point. But right now, the only employees who would be eligible for this Deferred Retirement Option Program are two of our department heads. And so, my question was, you know, can, can other employees apply for this at some point? And this is something that they would negotiate in contract negotiations, and that's the answer that I received from the mayor, as well as from others. And from my understanding, the employees that I've talked to think that this would be a great program if they're eligible to participate at some point, because I just had concerns about making a policy or benefit that's only available to a very select few of employees. And at some point, this is something that others could possibly apply for in their negotiations. So, I was happy to hear that.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Anything else from my colleagues? Anything from the audience, sir? Would you like to step forward?
I wanted to ask, in 1980, what, what was infected about this? Somebody answering?
Mr. Ohn, I apologize. I couldn't hear you.
In 1980, what was the contract?
It wasn't a contract. What I was saying, I apologize, Mr. Ohn, what I was saying, in 1980, this, this was allowed in the IRS code.
Okay.
So, they allow you to do this, and I was unaware of that, even though I asked, you know, how can you...
Was it avoided by the residents?
No, it's an IRS, the federal government.
No, I'm talking about this thing, it's like, because there's X78, it's not X78, right? You have no X78 here, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, basically, what about somebody retires? What about their, their medical? Because you guys have problems with medical, right now? The people are not getting their medical. Would this help with their medical benefits? If it's not happening with their medical benefits, I don't think this is a good idea.
Right.
To be honest with you.
Their medical benefits are, will continue as retirement, is that correct? I mean, that's a question we didn't have, so let's see. Is that...
Because that's the main concern when these people get old, that they're going to come back here, and they're going to argue with you. I'm asking to table it to see what's going on.
Mr. Ohn, let me have him answer.
Council President, thank you. It's two separate things. So, if someone is DROP-eligible and taking advantage of the DROP, then their benefits with the city would still continue while they maintain their employment. And then, there is also medical coverage through their retirement benefits if they, once they do separate.
Once they do separate?
Correct.
Okay. So, Mr. Ohn, because the person is, retirement is being held in, in, in abeyance, like it's being held up there?
How much are they going to, how much are they paying a month for them to take, take out from their...
The pay is the same. There's no difference in the pay. They still get their benefits because they're actively working. Is that...
What about the people right now? What are you guys going to do with the health benefits?
If I can clarify, Council President?
Yeah, Mayor?
The annual deductible for retirees, if you are below the age of Medicare eligibility, your annual deductible is net $250. If you're above the age of, if you qualify for Medicare, the annual deductible, the net deductible is $125 per year.
Every time you go to the hospital, they're going to charge you a bed fee, and then they're going to charge you ambulance fee, and then they're going to charge you a prescription drug fee. It, it, it comes with a whole bunch of people, like, they go and they want to get prescription drugs. That's the problem. The prescription drugs, the ambulance fee, and a whole bunch of fees. That's the problem.
Right. But, Mr. Ohn, just for this particular item, there's no change because the person is still employed, so he keeps the same benefits that he has.
Why don't you guys put it on the, with the residents for vote on it? Why should council vote on this? Residents should make the decision and put a decision, is it this decision, or put a decision where the police officers get better benefits? How do we know this is better benefit? We don't know. I think that the city...
They're the same benefits.
I think, I think the residents should vote on this.
Right.
Every city, the residents vote on this.
Okay. That's fine.
So, I'd say...
Thank you, Mr. Ohn. All right, any other questions or comments on this item? All right, Mr. Clerk, can we have the first reading?
This is the first reading of ordinance number 23-1799 entitled, an ordinance to amend the police and fire revised retirement system, chapter, chapter 23, by adding section 240.18 entitled Deferred Retirement Option Program. Resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Enos to table the ordinance.
All right. Any unanimous roll will be attached, unless hearing any objections. Hearing unanimous attach. Next item, please.
Item number 40, resolution by councilmembers Abraham and Herrick, denying the request of the Economic Development Department to rezon the properties located at 15700, 15750, and 15800 Lundey Parkway from a TR Technology and Research District to a residential A, one-family residential district classification.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. This is a request to rezon, a rezoning that is currently inconsistent with the city's master plan. This request to rezon 15700, 15750, and 15800 Lundey Parkway parcels from TR Technology and Research to RA, single-family residential district. The total area of this is, three undeveloped parcels is approximately 22.3 acres. The proposed rezoning does not align with the future land use categories, and the Planning Commission recommended denial on August 7, 2023. Is there any questions or comments on this item? Okay. Hearing is seen, none. Unanimous roll attached. Next item.
Item 41, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Enos, granting the request to Gallata Suites for the use of the closure of West Village Drive between Mason Street and Monroe Street from 7:00 a.m. Saturday, September 16, to 7:00 a.m. on Sunday, September 17, 2023, for a free-to-the-public Turkish music concert, also waiving the noise ordinance for the duration of the event and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. This is a street closure request is being made for Gallat, I'm sorry, Gallata Suites? Oh. That's proper, okay. To host a free Turkish music concert that will take place on September 16 from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. West Village Drive is currently closed for traffic for the Dearborn Summer Market between Mason and Monroe from 10:00 a.m. on Friday mornings until 7:00 a.m. on Sunday mornings. For this concert to take place, and a safer manner, the department requests an extension of the closure of West Village Drive between Mason and Monroe from 7:00 a.m. Saturday, September 16, until 7:00 a.m. on Sunday, September 17. It is also being requested to waive the noise ordinance during the duration of the event from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. on Saturday, the 16th, and immediate effect is being requested. Any questions or comments on this item? Hearing is seen, none. Unanimous roll attached. Next item, please.
Item 42, resolution by councilmembers Hamud and Herrick, authorizing the Ryder-17 Agreement with DTE Energy Company to purchase 85% of the city's energy requirements at selected renewable energy locations at a rate of 62 cents kilowatt-hour, which will not go into effect until 2026.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. In the past, the city relied on traditional non-renewable energy sources. One of the administration's goal is to operate with a more green infrastructure. This agreement with DTE is a step in that direction that allows the city to purchase power created by renewable, renewable energy sources for city-owned properties. Department of Public Works and Facilities requests approval of the DTE Energy Company Ryder-17 Agreement. DT is expanding its renewable energy portfolio with one or more designated renewable energy projects, as well as utilizing the capacity and generation under specific operations and projects. The locations selected are all city-owned parcels, parks, and buildings. Under this agreement, the city agrees to purchase 85% of its energy requirements as select, in the selected locations at a rate of .062 per kilowatt-hour. DTE Energy Company Ryder-17 Agreement will not go into effect until 2026. Any questions or comments on this item? Councilman Hamud?
So, I guess just one modification before we continue. The current way that it's slated is a 10-year agreement. I wanted to motion to expand it to a 20-year contract, because the city will continue to see savings as long as energy prices don't decrease, which is just highly unlikely, and there's still an exit clause in the contract that if a future council evaluates that this ends up increasing our costs, which right now, it's actually a net benefit to the residents of the city financially, they can exit at any time. But the good thing about extending it would be you'd freeze the price, because actually, the mayor and I were looking earlier, and it turns out, even in the last year, the price has already gone up on what kind of deal we can get from DTE with executing this contract. So, I think my assessment is that the price of energy is going to continue to go up, and the price of building out things is going to continue to go up. So, it's advantageous to future councils if we extend, allow them to have it extended, so.
All right. So, Councilman Hamud, you made the offer, and Councilman Herrick made the support. But Mayor, usually, we don't negotiate contracts here, so have you, are you in the opinion that the DTE will double the time limit from 10 to 20 under this contract?
DTE provides us the option of going up to a 20-year contract.
All right.
And net savings to, Councilman Hamud's point, is still the average of north of $200,000 a year, well into 2045, based on the timetable that they provided.
Okay, so, we, this agreement has an operation to go to 20 years.
Correct.
All right, so, currently, as Councilman Hamud indicated, it's 10. He's making his offer to amend to the 20 years, which is allowable in the current contract. Councilman Herrick, do you agree?
I agree.
Okay. So, Mr. Clerk, can you make sure that that modification is made?
Yes.
Offered by Councilman Hamud and supported by Councilman Herrick to amend the agreement to a 20-year term, which is allowable currently? Any questions or comments from my colleagues on this item?
So...
Councilman Hamud?
So, to kind of get back to a little bit more background on this, so I think this is a great program that actually I brought to attention to the mayor a little earlier this year, and they had time finally to look, kind of look into it, and I'm happy that you guys agreed with me on this one. So, what this is going to allow us to do, so it says in the item, purchase 85% of the city's energy requirements at, at this rate. So, it's going to be 100, it's going to be renewable energy. But the nice part is the grid is already 15% renewable as it is today. And so, by adding the 85 and 15%, the City of Dearborn buildings and all the buildings that are metered under our current energy bill will actually be running on 100% renewable energy by 2026. So, I think this is excellent for both environmental sustainability, and as the mayor and council president pointed out, there's also going to be a net savings to taxpayers. So, I think this accomplishes something that is good for the environment, it's good for city taxpayers, and it's done in an efficient manner that doesn't require any additional work or maintenance or overhead on our part. So, I think really, we've hit kind of like the trifecta of a good program. So, I'm really, really happy that administration decided to go in this direction, and I think this is a slam dunk of a project, so I think it's great.
Thank you. And just to clarify, Councilman, this is, and Mayor, I know we've talked about before, this is what the city will be doing, is purchasing energy that is made off-site our site. Is that correct? Such as when, when...
Solar, mostly, probably, when, yeah.
Right. So, they're harnessing the energy there and then selling it to us here. So, that's a new aspect. I know you championed this early on as well. Councilman Paris?
Thank you, Council President. I appreciate that this was brought forward and discussed during the mayor's briefing and during the committee of the whole. You know, I'm feeling a little bit challenged with this, because in particular, now going to 20 years, I don't know of any other contracts that we've got in the city that go for 10 years, let alone going for 20. Renewable energy, I, I get it, it's off-site, but with so many different changes in technology that's going forward into the future, you know, there may be other options in the future. I just am not willing to go forward for 20 years. 10 years is a long time in of itself. You know, some of my colleagues are involved as engineers and have different technologies that they're aware of and that they work on into the future, that I, I'm reminded all the time, it's going to be mind-blowing what's going to happen in the future and what's going to benefit all of us. But I've heard that before, and what I'm going to say about this, I'm hesitant anyways because the track record of DTE, and I know this is two different subjects. I'm more than willing to go with the 10 years, but just me, myself personally, I'm not willing to go with the 20 years.
All right, thank you, Councilman Paris. Any other questions or comments from my colleagues? They're not rhetorical. Yeah, I mean, Councilman Hamud, do you want to make a statement?
Brought up some points, so I just wanted to address it. So, there is actually an investment return table, and what we're doing by signing up with this is we get a do-not-exceed number. So, we're actually, we're not, we're not buying, you know, some kind of unexplored technology. We're actually just essentially buying energy futures. So, what we're doing is we're anticipating that the cost of energy is going to go up, which, I mean, pretty much anyone who is in any kind of energy generation sector will tell you, power generation and just grid transmission, all that, the costs have only ever gone up in our entire lifetimes. So, the, the only reason that I care to extend it is just to give, and we can also exit this contract at any time. So, if it ever costs us, or if we ever find that the standard grid is a, is a more advantageous financial arrangement for the city, we can always go back if we decide that, you know, we don't care about the clean energy aspect, we can always go back and amend it. And not just us, because I mean, this is going to be for future councils. They can assess it during the annual budget season and decide to not do this anymore. But we're talking on a scale of hundreds of thousands of dollars that we could save residents just by, you know, thinking ahead. So, it, it's kind of like just leaving money on the table when we, if we were to shorten it and kind of, you know, hamstring a future council with an additional, looks like almost $200,000 annually if we don't give them the option to renew the contract. So, that's the only reason that I, that I cared to extend it.
All right. Is there anyone from the, Councilman Herrick, did you have something? Did you? I'm sorry.
Just real, real quick.
Councilman Herrick, I apologize. Go ahead. Councilman Herrick, I apologize.
Thank you. No, 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 I was on the fence about, no, I wanted to thank Councilman Hamud for his bringing this forward, forward and his explanation. And the reason that I'm comfortable supporting the twenty years is exactly as he stated, that we can withdraw from the agreement at any, any time, and there's the not-to-exceed clause in there. So we're not going to end up paying more than we would if we were using energy from the traditional grid at some point, because it is an unknown. And as Councilman Paris pointed out, you know, we don't even know what's coming down the pipe with, as far as technological advances, things happen so fast. But I'm glad that that's built into this contract, that we're able to, to step out of it.
Exit, yeah.
At that time, exit out of it if, if we deem that it would be more advantageous for our residents at that time.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone from the audience, please step forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
So basically, if you exhaust this contract, what is the penalty?
Ms. Stone, my understanding from the mayor's is no, there is in this contract through our attorney, there is no exit penalty. Is that correct?
Correct.
Right. No, no penalty.
That's a good contract.
All right. Thank you. All right. Any other questions on this? Councilman, do you want to roll twelve vote then?
Yes, I would.
All right. Ms. Clerk, can we have a roll call vote?
Yes. Councilman Abraham.
Yes.
Councilman Paris.
No.
Councilman Womack Herrick.
Yes.
Council President Serini.
Yes.
Councilman Enos.
Yes.
Councilman Hamud.
Yes.
Five yeas, the resolution passes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Next item, please.
Item number forty-three, resolution by Councilmembers Herrick and Hamud, awarding a contract to Manic and Smith Group in the amount not to exceed $145,000 for federally-qualified archaeological and historic consultant as required to comply with section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act in order to use funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Okay. In order to comply with section 106 of the consultant must be concluded, must be concluded by projects of the Community Development Block Grant, which are CDBG grant for disaster recovery as well, and home investment participants, our home program as well. The Michigan State Historic Preservation Office, or SHPO, made changes, made changes for their initial, and I'm sorry, changes for initiating section 106 of the consultant in Michigan. The change requires that all identification of historic properties, both archaeological and architectural, must be completed by individuals meeting the acceptable federal qualifications outlined in thirty-six CFR Part sixty-one. There are several projects that we will, will require the section 106 consultation consultant. The evaluation team on behalf of the Economic Department recommends entering into a contract for this consultant with Manic and Smith Group. The value of the contract is not to exceed $145,000 for a term of the agreement, which is four years, which shall be charged to the Dix Verner Business District Improvement Authority, the Economic Development Department, the Grants Warren Business District Improvement Authority, and the Economic Development Community Block Grant and Economic Development as well. It is requested immediate, to be immediate effect on this. Any questions or comments? I know there was comments regarding this at our budget session, and I know that the courts did present pretty much all the answers and then emailed some others. Does anybody have some more questions on this consultant? No questions? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, you now ask for a V. Thanks. Thank you for coming. Next item.
Item forty-four, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Enos, awarding a four-year contract to Social Work Data PLLC.
Another one, yeah.
In an amount not to exceed $140,000 for research, data analysis, and program evaluation for two treatment court programs at the Nineteenth District Court, valid October first, 2022 through September thirtieth, 2026, and requesting immediate effect.
Okay. Thank you. Prior site review report for Justice for Vets Technology Assistance Team recommended an external evaluation of the Veterans Treatment Court program for their Nineteenth District Court. The federal grant solicitation released in 2022 of both the Veterans Treatment Court and the Hybrid DWI and Drug Treatment Court included a provision for priority consideration of applications that include proposed components designed to address delivery of program services to historical underserved marginalized communities. Grant applications for both the Veteran Court and the Drug Treatment Court included research analysis products with Social Work Data PLLC to assist these program effectiveness. Both applications were selected for grant rewards, including the funding of the above referenced research analysis project. The Nineteenth District Court, through the City of Dearborn Purchasing Department, recommends the award of this contract for research and data analysis and evaluation by two Social Work Data PLLC. The value of the four-year contract, valid October first, 2022 through September thirtieth, 2026, is to not exceed $140,000, which shall be charged to the General Fund, Veterans Treatment Court, and Hybrid Adult Drug Court Contractual Service. Projects expenses for both programs will be covered under the federal grant funds and immediate effect is being requested. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, step forward. Any questions from the audience, please step forward.
Drug court has failed the system several times, and you know what? What they do, they don't do nothing. All they do is monitor somebody, and the next thing you know, somebody needs help. What do they do? They lock them up in jail. That's what they do. That's, that, this is the worst program I've ever seen in my life. I've seen people go through it. This is, this is, this is terrible. You want to put people, put them in a rehab center. They have a problem, you put them in rehab. This program is not going to do nothing for nobody. It's all it's going to do is it's going to get locked up ninety days, gets out, commits another crime, ninety days, gets out, goes, does another crime, and does four, five years. That's what it is. This, this program does, does not benefit anybody. You'll see it, and you'll, you'll know what it is. If you haven't been down the road, you're not going to know how, how it is. It failed in Detroit, it used to be here before, you guys took it off, and now you guys bring it, bring it back. So I'm asking you guys, if there's a treatment program, always consider that the judge to lock them up and put them in a rehabilitation facility that cannot get out unless he gets treatment. That's the only way this will be solved.
Thank you, Ms. Stone. Councilman Herrick?
Thank you, Council President. I believe our court administrator, Mr. Ruby, is here, and if he could just come up for a moment, because if he could elaborate on what the research that's being gathered through this study is, what we're hoping to gain from the research, because it may provide some data along the lines of what Mr. Aun was referring to.
Absolutely. Benjamin Ruby, Court Administrator, Nineteenth District Court. So this is designed basically to assess not only past participants and outcomes for those individuals in terms of recidivism and where they're at following the program, but it's also working with participants that are currently in the program in order to see, you know, basically to determine how effective we've been with an alternative method of approaching some of the problems that the court is designed to deal with. And so at the end of it, what we should have is a better grasp of just how effective this is as opposed to traditional methods of sentencing, which I think Mr. Allen was referring to, where you're locking people up routinely for ninety-plus days. That's not what this is about. This is designed to help people get the treatment and get the services that they need in order to get at the underlying cause of what brought them before the court in the first place. These are individuals who've got problems that go considerably deeper than the fact that they're in front of the court on a misdemeanor DUI charge. A lot of these circumstances is longstanding abuse that these programs are designed to address. And so what this research is going to help us do is not only kind of quantify and evaluate the success that we've got versus, you know, other ways of handling these problems, but is also going to take a look at who it is that we're reaching and making sure that we're doing this work in a fashion that is as open as an opportunity to as many people as possible, regardless of where they're coming from or what their background is. And that's sort of the priority consideration component that was referred to in the reading. This is, at the federal level, a, a, a point of emphasis for them to make sure that these programs are reaching people in an equitable fashion. And so that is the other sort of component of the research that's going to be taking place here.
Thank you, Mr. Ruby. Appreciate that. Councilman Paris?
Just real quickly to, to address this issue, so people in the audience and people at home know also, you know, mental health is, I think, top of mind for a lot of people, especially in this community, because we do have some problems. But one thing that I do want to point out is so people are aware of, about access and what they're trying to accomplish, that they have a, you know, comprehensive substance abuse disorder building that is going to be going up in the porath in Michigan Avenue area that's planned for, and then some in-house residential housing for treatment. So that is something that the city is supporting. I know that this council has been taking tours through access, so I think we're aware, you know, what's going on, you know, in this community, and we have failed. We failed for a long time, you know, going back to the Angler administration to where we're at right now. You know, we have to address this issue, and I'm happy to see that Access is doing this. We do have some other areas within the city that have substance abuse and mental health disorders that, for treatment, but we're not there yet, but we're working towards that goal. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Paris. Any other comments from my colleagues? Okay. Mr. Ruby, you're, anybody from the audience would like to speak on this, please step forward? Ruby, you can go, you can have a seat. We'll call you up, please. Thank you so much.
Drugs leads to mental health. That's the problem. When you start using drugs, you're going to have a mental health crisis when you stop. People don't understand it. Unless you've been through it, you don't know it. So, like I tell everybody, this, this program is designed to help people, but there's a program that you guys can contribute to team wellness until they open access. The team wellness program will take them, to put them into rehabilitation, to keep them there until they get the treatment, because mental health is a big issue. You stop using, you'll always have, like, some doctor told my son, he goes, you'll always have an addiction problem, even if you stop, you will always have addiction problems. That's the problem we're suffering is, and every time I address it, that's what people tell me. We're going to change. It never gets changed. We're sitting here today, talking about this situation, and you guys have never been through it. It does not make any sense. What is it going to take for you guys to understand that this program, if there is not, we cannot sentence a person that has this kind of treatment to jail? Jail's not going to help. They're going to come out so, what's it called? They're withdrawing in there, they can die, they can, what's it called? It's terrible. They come back outusing. They need to be with a group, with a bunch of people that, that understand them, this and that. It's a big situation that people don't understand. Trust me. I've been through it for two years with my son. I've, I had the worst time, you know, and I'm just telling you, I don't want nobody to sit there and tell me sorry or anything. It's okay, my son's been dead for five years, but people don't understand, mental health, access does not help. I went to access, they refused me. I went everywhere, they refused me. Hypothetic Center never helped me. Nobody ever helped me. The only one person right now is Danny Harani, and he's the only one that takes people in, and that's what he does. He, he takes them straight to treatment, to the Wellness Center, and he says that we'll put them there until that, we, they'll take them to the, another facility. That's what he's doing now. So I don't know who to trust now but him. I don't trust nobody else. I've seen how he does. I've seen he's motivated, and I'm asking, if you guys get team wellness at, at this time to hook up with the, with the courts, I think that's better off than sitting there, putting them in a program, dropping, and this and that. These people that use drugs need help, because they're not going to stop. It's very hard to stop, especially if it's heroin. There's no way they're going to stop. They're always going to violate and go back to jail, and we're not accomplishing nothing. Kids are dying, and nobody's doing nothing about it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Stone. Any other questions or comments from anybody in the audience? All right. And any objection to unanimous rule on this one? Unanimous rule will be attached. Next item, clerk.
Item number forty-five, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Hamud, granting the request of the Karbala Islamic Education Center to conduct the Arbiin Ashura Commemorative March Rally on Sunday, September three, 2023, from 2:00 p.m. until 5:00 p.m., subject to all applicable ordinances, rules, and regulations of the City of Dearborn Police Department, and reimbursement for all city services, also authorizing the use of Ford Woods Park, and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Ms. Clerk. This will mark the nineteenth year that the Karbala Islamic Education Center will be conducting the Arbiin Ashura Commemoration March Rally. The annual religious observance occurs forty days after the day of Ashura. In the past years, the event, on average, has attracted approximately 3,000-plus participants. The Karbala Islamic Education Center will be renting the entire Ford Woods Park from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. for the rally, and after the march, the park will remain open for public use and walking trails. The north parking lot will be closed until 6:00 p.m. The right lane on northbound of Greenfield will be closed from 1:30 to 4:00 p.m. on September third. DPW will deliver barricades, trash receptacles to Ford Woods Park, and the Dearborn Police will provide traffic control for the march. Karbala Islamic Education Center will reimburse both the Department of Public Works and the Police Department for all incurred charges, along with payment for the use of both shelters at the Ford Woods Park, and this is immediate request is being requested. Any questions or comments on this item? All right. Hearing and seeing none, unanimous rule will be attached. Next item.
Item forty-six, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Enos, authorizing the finance director to recognize the WETA producing station behind PBS, iconic America Library Micro Grant, in the amount of $500 in the library fund number 271-5100-365.90-00, and appropriate the same in account number 271-5100-721-3490.
Thank you, Ms. Clerk. This is a request acknowledged to receive a $500 from the WT, WETA producing station behind the new PBS series Iconic America, our symbols and stories with David Rubenstein. The money from the grant will be used to pay for three library programs centered around the theme of the series that will begin on this month and run through September. It is being, it is being requested that the council recognize the finance director to recognize the grant in the library fund donations from private source funds to pay for costs associated with these presenters. Any questions or comments on this item? Hearing and seeing none, unanimous rule will be attached. Next item.
Item forty-seven, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Enos, acknowledging a donation from the Museum Guild of Dearborn in the amount of $20,000 as a contribution to the 2022-2023 budget of the Dearborn Historical Museum, also authorizing the finance director to recognize the donation and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Ms. Clerk. This is a request acknowledgement of $20,000 donation from the Museum Guild of Dearborn to the Historic, to the Dearborn Historical Museum. This $20,000 goes towards the Museum Guild's contribution to the 2022-2023 budget and was included in our origin, in our original budget plan adopted. Immediate effect is being requested. Any questions or comments on this item?
Council President?
Mayor?
Was this the grant that Councilman Abraham was going to match?
I don't know.
Yeah, in years of service.
There you go. That is a good one. That's a good one, though. All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. Unanimous rule will be attached. Next item.
Item forty-eight, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Enos, granting the request of the Museum Guild of Dearborn to close the use of city-owned parking lot located on the east side of the Monroe Street, directly behind the Dearborn Historical Museum and Commandant's Quarters, from Thursday, September 28th, 2023, at 7:00 a.m. to Saturday, September 30th, 2023, at 12:00 p.m. for the Dearborn Historical Museum's 10th Annual Beer Festival on Friday, September 29th, 2023, also waiving the noise ordinance for the duration of the event and all fees, including that for tent and electrical permits, and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Ms. Clerk. The Recreation and Parks Department and the Dearborn Historical Museum respectfully request a special event approval to be held at the annual Museum Guild of Dearborn 10th Annual Beer Festival, and closure and exclusion to, and exclusive use of the Commandant's Quarter and adjoining city parking lot. Also, the request is an exemption for the noise ordinance to permit festival sound to reach upwards of 100 decibels, specifically from 7:00 p.m. to midnight on September 29th, and requested the council waive all fees associated with the event, including that, including that for the tents and electrical hookups. The Museum Guild of Dearborn will assist, will need assistance, I'm sorry, the Museum Guild of Dearborn will need assistance from the Dearborn Police Department as well, B-Patrol spot checks, and fifty steelcade barricades or fencing for the duration of the event from the DPW Department, as well as staging for the microphone, as well as tables and chairs. The Museum Guild of Dearborn will obtain a one-day, one-day liquor permit and provide liquor liability insurance for the beer tasting event. The expense of the project will be paid by the Museum Guild of Dearborn, 5013(c) nonprofit organization, in conjunction with sponsorships from local businesses, and the museum aims to raise approximately $5,000 in scholarships from this event and is requesting immediate effect. Anyone here would like to speak on this 10th annual beer, beer tasting event? Okay.
Good evening. I'm Matt Graff, Assistant Curator at the Dearborn Historical Museum, and this is an event that's been going on for, as you noted, ten years, and every year, we try to mix it up. The last three years, we've held it at our Commandant's Quarters Building. Before, it used to be at our address at Brady Street, and the Commandant's Quarters Building is undergoing a lot of extensive renovations, a lot of the upper-level floors, new plaster work, painting, electrical work in partnership with our city electricians, new exhibit cases telling the story of Dearborn from its earliest decades all the way up to the present day. So this event is to fundraise, in part, to help finish those restorations and renovations, and get the museum to be a more exciting destination for visitors, to bring their families, and to tell the City of Dearborn's rich and vibrant history.
Absolutely. Thank you. And hopefully, we'll all see you there. So this year, it's going to be back on Brady.
No, this year, it's at the Commandant's.
This year, it's at the Commandant's.
In previous years, it was at Brady.
In the past, it was.
Yep.
Okay. Excellent. Any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Okay. Thank you, sir. Unanimous rule will be attached. Next item.
Item forty-nine, resolution by council members Enos and Abraham, granting the request of the Kiwanis Club of Dearborn, P.O. Box 2411, Dearborn, Michigan, 4124, to hold its annual peanut street sales on September 7, 8, 9, and 10, 2023, from 7:00 AM until 7:00 PM at various street locations and businesses throughout the city.
All right, thank you, Ms. Clerk. Celebrating their ninety-third year, the Kiwanis Club of Dearborn will hold its annual peanut street sales. The funds go directly to support numerous community service projects and local organizations that benefit our communities' youth and elderly, and as well as disadvantaged. The Kiwanis Club of Dearborn is requesting permission to sell peanuts on the streets from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM on September 7, 8, 9, 10 of this year. An immediate effect is being requested. Any questions or comments on this one? Hearing and seeing none. Unanimous rule will be attached. Next item.
Item fifty, resolution by council member Paris, supported unanimously, offering condolences to the family of Craig Bechtel and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you. No, we're sad to announce the passing of one of our city retirees, Craig Bechtel. He passed away on August 9 of 2023, surrounded by his family, and was 59 years old. Craig worked for the city of Dearborn for twenty-six years, first as a mechanic, until his dream job opened up as a journeyman carpenter. He took pride in his job and loved the challenge of the many projects he was presented with. Craig also truly respected his coworkers and felt that it was an honor to work for the city and work with them. Craig was an avid outdoorsman and a hunter and a fisherman. He was proud to be a Dearborn Police Reserve Officer from 1996 to 2010, retiring as a Reserve Corporal. He belonged to Sons of the American Legion, Fort Dearborn Post 364, in honor of his father. Craig was an active Dearborn Municipal Retirees Association member and the Municipal Employees Association. Craig and his wife are both lifelong Dearborn residents. You know, working for the city as long as Craig did and then devoting even more time as a Dearborn Police Reserve Officer just further shows the character of this man that we knew as Craig Bechtel. Craig Bechtel leaves behind his beloved wife, Donna, who works in our senior services department within the city, his children, Dan and spouse Brenna, Ashley and spouse Jeff, and Christopher and his brothers, Dick and spouse Carol, Mike, spouse Debbie, and the late brother Bruce. He also leaves behind grandchildren, Brendan, Ava, Tristan, Alyn, and Jax, along with many other friends and families. Bless you, Craig Bechtel. You will be sorely missed.
Thank you, Councilman. And unanimous rule will be attached. Ms. Clerk, next item.
Item fifty-one, resolution by council president Serini, supported unanimously, offering condolences to the family of Ronald Bukowski and requesting immediate effect.
Ronald Bukowski was born on February 18, 1943, and sadly passed away on August 17 of this year at the age of eighty years old. He was a beloved husband of fifty-four years to Nancy Bukowski, father of Pam, Kim, as well as Ron Jr., and a cherished grandfather of Sean, Kylie, Kayla, Justin, and Jacob, the dearest son of the late Stanley and Mary Bukowski, the brother of Jerry Bukowski, Janet Guy Diljudas is the sister, and his uncle Jeff, Tia, and the late Tony. Best friend of Hunter, who he loved and adored. Ron attended Wayne State University when he was hired by the City of Dearborn Public School System on September 1 of 1968, where he served as assistant principal until 1988, before taking on the role as principal of Nowland School on July 1 of 97, which he served for ten years until his retirement in 2007. After his retirement, Ron continued to take various roles and help out where he could in the city. He was enthusiastic about stepping forward for principals when they were out of town or various reasons. He even served as active administrator for Gear Park for a while as well. He also served in our courts at the front as our security officer for the Nineteenth District Court for several years. Also worked with our Parks and Recreation Department as well for many city events volunteering. Coach Ron Bukowski, as I always called him, was a very patient, thoughtful man. It was, he was a delight to all those around him. He's a friend to everyone he met and will be missed very dearly. He's committed to his family. He was kind, and he was warm in interactions with everyone that he met, and he truly admired, has admired qualities. The positive impact he will leave on the thousands of students in his schools, as well as the safe and engaging educational environment that he provided will always be remembered for years to come. I can say that he made a large impact on my siblings and myself, and he will not be forgotten. He will be remembered in Dearborn as an outstanding leader, husband, and father, along with his reputation for passionately giving back to the community at every opportunity he had. He was very proud of his accomplishments, as well as his time spent together with his family. He was loved, respected, admired by all that surrounded him and our community mourns his great loss. The services will be this Thursday, the 24th, at the Hackett Metcalf Funeral on 2640 Monroe in Dearborn between 4:00 PM and 8:00 PM. He will lie in state and the next day, on the 25th, at the Divine Child Catholic Church at 9:30 AM. To all, we offer our heartfelt, sincere condolences to the family and his loved ones. Councilwoman Herrick?
Thank you. I think Councilman Abraham is probably gonna elaborate further on what I'm gonna say of my memories of Ron. For the people that go to the Dearborn Homecoming Festival every year, especially the people that go every year, it's, it can be a different thing. We all have in common that we're reuniting with somebody at homecoming usually. It can be family, friends, classmates. But for the people that work at the Homecoming Festival, whether as volunteers or on the staff, Craig Bechtel was there for many, many years, and Ron Bukowski was there for many, many, many years. And when I started working on the Homecoming Festival and the core team that organized the festival about fifteen years ago now, Ron was one of the guys, one of the people that I knew that I could go to, no matter what it was that I needed. Whether we needed to find trash bags for the garbage cans over there, or one of the vendors needed ice, or just if you were, it was hot outside and you were, you know, needed that next bottle of water. You didn't know if you could make it through the day. He was there with a joke and a smile. He was just such a generous spirit and somebody, again, that I knew that I could count on. And it made, he was one of those people that made coming back to homecoming fun, even though it was a job every year. And Craig was the same way in the times that I worked with him at homecoming. You know, I knew that I could count on Craig. He was always a can-do, yes, I can help you, spirit. And I will miss both of them very dearly. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Abraham?
Yeah, Ron Bukowski, coach, as Council President knows him as well, was a part of our family growing up. Him and my father were good friends, went through Fortson Football together. And, you know, Ron, to me, after all these comments, you know, is just one of those pillars in our community, ambassador to the city, not only homecoming, but he was always in attendance at the Memorial Day Parade, riding around, making sure everybody found the right place and get in the right place. And I think, you know, Ron was a part of our Fortson Alumni Club, and this year, he was inducted into the Fortson Athletic Hall of Fame. And I think that was something that was really dear to him, and it was very important to him. And I'm glad we had a chance to recognize him before he passed. So thank you, Council President.
Absolutely. Thank you for all your comments. He's gonna be sorely missed. Unanimous rule will be attached. Next item, Ms. Clerk.
Item fifty-two, resolution by council members Paris and Hamud, concurring in the appointment of Ali Al Hashimi to the Warren Business District Improvement Authority with a term ending June 30, 2026, and requesting immediate effect.
All right, this is an appointment for Mr. Ali Hashimi to serve on the Board of Warren Business Improvement Authority for a three-year term ending June 30, 2026. Again, as the council would like to always thank all of the members that are serving these volunteer commissions that are very important in the city. And again, they are volunteers, so we do appreciate Mr. Hashimi taking this appointment. Any questions or comments on this one? Unanimous rule will be attached. Next item.
Item fifty-three, resolution by council members Herrick and Hamud, concurring in the appointment of Abbas Amar to the Warren Business District Improvement Authority with a term ending June 30, 2026, and requesting immediate effect.
Yeah, and this is another appointment, and this one is by Mr. Abbas Amar to serve on the Board of the Warren Avenue Improvement Authority for three years, a term that will end June 30, 2026. Mr. Amar is part of the family of the Al Amir Restaurant. So it's gonna be great input from them as well on Warren Avenue. Any questions or comments on this item? Unanimous rule will be attached. Next item.
Item fifty-four, resolution by council members Herrick and Enos, concurring in the appointment of Steve Durant to the Recreation and Parks Commission, a term ending June 30, 2026, and requesting immediate effect.
Yeah, and this is another approval for Mr. Stephen Smith to serve at the Parks and Recreation Commission for a three-year term ending June 30, 2026. Any questions or comments on this item? And again, we'd like to thank them for their service. Councilwoman Herrick?
I'd just like to congratulate Steve Durant on becoming a commissioner on the Recreation Commission. He, if you went to the, or have seen on our social media, the beautiful mural now at Salina School, his wife is Sunshine Durant, who coordinates the Pockets of Perception Student Design Team and that mural project. And Steve was working behind the scenes. He was not in the photos and talking at the microphone, but he works behind the scenes. And one of the things that I know he did in that mural in particular was putting the finishing coat to make sure that the mural stays bright and beautiful for many years to come. And that's just what he does because of his support of his family, his wife, and the arts. And I think he's going to, you know, just bring a fresh perspective to the Recreation Commission. And as Council President said, you know, we thank anybody who serves on the commission, giving their time and sharing their talents. And, you know, you could be anywhere else that evening, whichever commission you are serving on. And I thank all who step up for that important role. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other questions or comments? Unanimous rule will be attached. Next item, Ms. Clerk.
We have a walk-on item, item fifty-five, resolution in need of offering support, granting permission to the Fire Department to conduct the annual Dearborn Firefighters Fill the Boot fundraiser drive from September 11 through September 13, 2023, throughout the city for the Muscular Dystrophy Association, and requesting immediate effect.
All right, Ms. Clerk, we have an offer by Councilman Hamud and support by Councilman Paris. This is a request to approve the Dearborn Fire Department's Fill the Boot fundraiser drive. This has been a longstanding charitable drive undertaken by the firefighters, has always been very successful in obtaining much-needed financial assistance to the Muscular Dystrophy Association. As in the past, the firefighters are requesting to place themselves at various locations throughout the city in order to collect donations for motorists, for the MDA. The firefighters shall follow all ethical laws and ordinances as required for donation collections on public roads and wear safety vests to ensure visibility. The fundraiser drive will take place on September 11 through September 13. An immediate effect is being requested. Any questions or comments on this item? Unanimous rule will be attached. Next item.
Nothing further on the agenda for tonight.
All right, thank you, Ms. Clerk. So I have a few things from the council before we turn it over. I just wanted to recognize a few things. So as we read through the agenda, a lot of the residents might have heard. Of course, the last one was the Fill the Boot program by the firefighters, the Kiwanis Clubs, peanuts, and the museum and the Museum Guild. I just want to make, you know, thanks for these programs. I want everybody to understand, to have a quality city that we have, these nonprofits and these people that volunteer their time to give the good and to do the things that are needed for the people that can't do themself, is a great effort. So if you see them out there, the bag of peanuts is not that big. I think it's shrunk a little, but it's worth it. Get the bag of peanuts, fill the boot up, and go to the museum. You will have a great time, and you will continue to flourish to make Dearborn what it is today. And we believe that these are very strong programs and a strong knit community. So I wanted to thank them for that. I wanted to, a couple other things. I wanted to mention, we had a very successful homecoming. I know that people were all over, up and up on the hill, everywhere for the fireworks. Mayor, I don't know if you wanna speak about it, but from what I seen and the sales numbers, it looked, it was very tremendous back home at Fordfield.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. Honestly, just a shout-out to all the nonprofits who helped participate, making this successful, and all the staff who put in the hours. From our perspective, it was great to have homecoming back home. And I think people enjoyed the performances. I mean, Sunday rained out a little bit, but it was still a great day. And we have the best fireworks show, I think, in the state.
That's right.
I think that's like the clear takeaway.
Definitely. It was really nice. And the show. I mean, I know my daughter went and seen, yeah, Pocket Full of Sunshine, and they loved it. They had a great time. I'll tell you, it's a nice, it's a nice event. And it's, a lot of the members up here know, it's a real good time. A lot of residents that don't live in the area don't want to come back to see their classmates and to visit with them, and it's a part of Dearborn. So I'm glad it was very successful. I also just wanted to wish everybody a happy Labor Day as it's coming back. I know the school's coming back as well. I know that some people are happy, some people are sad. The summer, I do feel, was a little short. And then, Mayor, I have one from a resident that is very, very, very happy with the speed hump, right? Is that the word? Humps that we've been putting in and testing. But now, I'm getting requests from them at other areas. So what's, should we forward them through the Chief of Staff here? Because this one is actually on Silver Lane and Wilson, and they said it's fabulous. But they need one on North Silver Lane between Lawrence and Dockstater. So I know we're starting to get a lot of requests for the humps.
Yeah, so we haven't posted about the ones around Levegood Park yet because we're waiting for the last batch to arrive, to finish off that Silvery Lane and Wilson area. So those will be installed. I think the three areas that we've covered this year would be Humlock Park, Lepire Park, and Levegood Park. We're gonna stop with those three for this year, just to pilot the winter months, and also explore additional traffic calming measures. And so, but we have, you know, several hundred, I think we're over north of a thousand requests so far on speed humps. But I think we wanna monitor these three to see what the wear and tear is like in the winter season, plowing around them, things of that nature, before we roll it out more robust in the years to come.
No, absolutely, Mayor. So just for us and for the residents, so the plan is for them to maintain, they will still be there during the winter.
But then, we're gonna pilot, we're gonna pilot that if we have it there in the winter, because they're fairly spread apart, that you might not have the few feet in front of the hump on each side plowed. But overall, the street would be plowed. And so that's why we don't want too many of them all over scattered in every single neighborhood. So we wanna see how we manage it with our trucks. They're obviously marked with the speed hump signs on the medians, on the easements. And so we just wanna make sure that we can navigate them appropriately and figure out, is taking them down during the winter months better than keeping them up and plowing around them? And so we gotta figure that out.
Yeah, I do appreciate the cautionist to make sure. And then I do know, too, for the director, there is new plows for the front that do have, that do have separation where they go over the humps. Part of it does. So as they need to be replaced, that might be an idea for some of those. Anything from, I'd like to open up to my colleagues on the council. Councilwoman Herrick?
Thank you, Council President. I'd just like to elaborate on what you mentioned. It's back-to-school time. And when we have the Kiwanis out with their peanuts on the streets and families taking their children to school, please be careful on the streets. Around our schools in particular, we just have to be, give a little extra thought and be a little more patient, especially during those drop-off and pick-up times. And for the students who are returning to college this fall, parents, I feel you, empty nesters. But I wish all of those students all the best as they go back to wherever it is that they're studying, if they're leaving home to study. And to my son Brendan, good luck in your senior year at U of M Goblu.
That's good. That's excellent. Excellent. My colleagues, Councilman Enos?
High school football starts this week. Wish best of luck to all of our local high school teams, especially Elsa Ford.
Yeah, absolutely. It is, it is. I tried not to say anything about that because my son's playing his senior year, so I'm not gonna say anything.
In Dearborn.
Game's on Thursday. I'm already on this.
I gotta wager to place.
Oh, no, no, Mayor. It's a big game. Please.
So I gotta say something. So, you know, a news story ran about the new field at Dearborn High. And I commented that I've never seen something so hideous. And I want you all to know that all the Dearborn High football players started crying in the comment section. One of which is Mike's son. And so I wanna place a wager, Council President. I think we do this, given that you're now at Dearborn High. If Dearborn High Varsity Team beats Fortson Varsity, I will be the water boy for Dearborn High for the following game.
We will take that up.
And if Fortson Varsity beats Dearborn High Varsity, you will be the water boy for the successive Fortson game.
That's a deal, Mayor. That's a deal. And I'll wear my jersey. I'll wear my jersey as a Fortson, Fortson lad and a Dearborn lad.
It's gonna be a good game.
It's better than chicken wings. I like that. Water boy's good. And I can get on the sideline.
They're gonna die of thirst.
They might not want to be on the sideline. All right, anything else from my colleagues until I open up to the, out there? Yeah, I'm gonna get them up here. Anybody from the council like to say anything else? Okay, at this time, anything from the audience, we will now open it to public comment. Jack, would you like to come up?
Only one short comment.
Yes.
The first in Dearborn City football game between Esselford, I didn't say Esselford, Dearborn High and Fortson was Thanksgiving Day, 1929.
No way.
And the winner?
Who was it?
Unfortunately, it was Fortson.
Is anybody surprised?
Yeah, I mean, come on, in the twenties.
That's why we say legacy.
Mr. Tate, thank you. And I want you to know, you're the only person I'll like comment from the chair. Not coming up. Thank you for, thank you for all you do. And I know Sunday, there's gonna be some guests at the museum to see you. And I wanna invite my colleagues there around between four. at the museum to see you, and I want to invite my colleagues there around between 4:00 and 7:00 PM in that timeframe. I know that some people are coming. The association wants to honor you and thank you for all the work you've done. Jack, you know, when I got here, they asked you to come up with a five-year master plan of the, with a staff of one person, and you did it.
Before he went.
And you did it, and you stood to it. So, we can't thank you enough, and the people around you that you'll be able to bring for the museum is a big deal, so we do appreciate it. So, Sunday, my colleagues will see you guys over there. All right, this time, we'd like to open up to public comment. Please be reminded, it's a three-minute rule. Step forward, state your name and address for the record, and then we do have one comment card.
Good afternoon, Hassan Yen. Chair, last time I put a resolution, and you disrespected me by throwing me out. You violated the public act meeting. You're not allowed to throw somebody out when they're sitting on this podium and talking. I was not interrupting the audience. You want to sit there and just, if I tell you to put the American flag and put the Dearborn flag and Michigan flag, and the president wore it, you sat there and you disrespected me. You disrespected the flag, just to let you know. You know, you're mute, you guys don't want to answer. I sent you emails, and you wanted me to send you an email. You got the email, you still didn't put the resolution on, and I'm still going to ask for the resolution, okay? Because this is America, and this is what I represent. I represent my country, freedom of religion, that's what I represent. Freedom, this flag right here is the only flag I represent. I don't know what you represent, but I represent this flag. By sitting here, over here on City Council, I think you should represent that flag. I represented the Dearborn flag, I represented the Michigan flag, but you threw me out and thought you were going to sit there and just humiliate me. But you didn't humiliate me, you humiliated yourself. Straightforward. A lot of people came up to me, had a lot of calls, that that's disrespect. And you're the type of person, you don't apologize to somebody. You're stubborn, you won't apologize to me. And that's the problem about you. You make some, you did something wrong twice, not three times, twice you threw me out for no reason. I did not sit here in the audience and interrupt the audience. I came over here for my three minutes, and I asked you, is my three minutes up? And what did you say? Yes, but you escorted me out. Why? Because you did not want to represent the American flag. I don't know what flag you represent, but I represent the American flag. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Mr. Art? Yes, sir. Come step forward here.
I've got a simple request. I live in a 2013 Cornell, right by the dealership for LaFontaine. Dick Fidge owned a home, my last house, on Harvard, I mean, on, yeah, on Harvard, right up against his property. I noticed a couple of weeks ago, because of the work they're doing on Harvard, that the house was demolished. My question is, there's three empty lots that LaFontaine has owned for years. Last time we got into this, it was stated by the council and by the woman who was the lawyer for the city, that's going back to, I believe, Mike, can't think of her last name.
Guido.
Pardon?
Guido.
Guido, yes, I'm sorry. And they stated that that is all residential property. They cannot move it backward to try to give it to LaFontaine to put something up there or to build a parking lot or anything. I would appreciate it, at the next meeting, you could advise me if this is still going because we haven't, no one has received a piece of paper yet to have it, to decide on it. At that time, we came down, that was, we were all advised to be at the meeting, and that was stated then, now that the Fidge house has already been demolished, I don't know who did that, if it was done by LaFontaine or if it was done by the city. But the point is, that is residential, we don't want a parking lot, we don't want anything up there except the home, if you're going to put anything up.
Okay, sir, I appreciate that, but I believe, Mr. Mendelson, that was something that the council took up, I think, the last meeting. That home, if I'm correct, was approved by the council, they knocked it down and are creating a buffer, and it's a parking lot. That's what they're going to use it as far as a parking vehicles.
How did you have it changed by, we are the residents, that is supposed to be brought up to residence?
This is on Harvard, different area?
Almost the east.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. If, just so you know, nobody's saying now, there's something that's taken down now, is that correct?
I'm going back to Guido.
Okay, but what?
At that time, there was 500 yards, or 500 feet or 500 yard buffer. The Fidge house stopped anything being put in there except a home.
Okay, hang on a second, let's see what the mayor and the legal department.
I was going to say, I'll take the address and information. I think this might have been something that came before council years ago, and maybe action is being taken now.
No, it's never been advised to us.
No, I don't.
I've lived here 23 years now.
Harvard Street is residential. Harvard Street's residential there.
Yes.
That's never been rezoned for parking. I do believe that the business owner, for a long time, has been trying to acquire property in that area.
He's got plenty of property.
Let me just, let me just.
All right, let him, yeah, let him finish, he's trying to explain.
And I was there the last time we did a rezoning across the street.
Right, that's where it used to be.
And I was there when, when we rezoned that back lot, not on Harvard, but further back, off Telegraph. And I know the residents came to all those meetings, and I could tell you, my position back then was to allow that last rezoning and then preserve that rest of that neighborhood. And to my knowledge, there's no, I mean, we have the city planner, she was here, I don't believe there's been an application filed to rezone those properties on Harvard Street. And that would be the legal process, the property owner would have to petition the city, go to the planning commission, then the planning commission would send it to the council.
Right.
And then the council is the final authority on any of those zoning changes that are required to change the use from single-family residential to anything else.
Our impression was, at that point in time, that nothing can go up there but homes.
That is still true, unless the zoning changes.
Now, he's stating that that house is now demolished. I hope you didn't take all that wood and throw it.
The city didn't demolish that house. The city was not, that was a private.
The mayor's got the address.
Let me get the address and information.
We'll get you information, but that wasn't a city ordered demolition.
The thing is, we were all advised about this.
I understand.
This time, we got nothing.
Okay, let me just, I just want to make sure we're clear. People have a right to buy property and do, and tear it down. We can't, the city.
Oh, I don't care about the tear down.
Well, you keep bringing it up, like.
Well, that's because it was the last one standing.
It doesn't matter. The property owner has that right.
Okay.
And they can build a new house there.
Did you pay to be by that property, is that it?
Sir, I think what we're going to do at this point, let me give you an example. We're going to have Jackie take your information so the mayor can get to it, and we'll find out what's going on. But here's the thing, so you know about the law. You're, just so I've got a little confused here, you're saying a building recently got knocked down or got knocked down years ago?
Just got knocked down.
Recently.
About three weeks ago.
Okay, so, just so you know.
I haven't gone on Harvard that night.
I understand.
Much because of the work that's been put in.
Right, I understand. But, so you know, and Mr. Mendelson, the requirement for zoning is 300 yards? 300 feet?
Notification.
Notice.
Notification.
Notice. I'm sorry?
I can double-check.
Yeah, so, what happens is, if zoning, as Councilman Abraham is indicating, if they decided to take down the building, that's their right, but we're not in the.
I don't care about the building, okay?
I know, but.
Let's just throw that one out.
I know, so let me finish, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. If you're within 300, if you're within 300 yards, you're going to get notice if there's a zoning change. So, 300 feet, is it? Or 300 yards?